We'll go ahead and get started with that proclamation. I think we're still waiting for our fourth council member Vice Mayor Candell. But I guess this is before the roll call is the proclamation or should we?
We had to set this up as a separate meeting, so you do need to go through the procedural steps on the agenda for the special meeting.
Okay, okay. And then then we'll, okay, so Sasha, can we call roll, please?
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Councilmember Carol.
Yeah.
Councilmember Handel. Here, Paul.
Here, and it looks like Councilmember Candell just walked in. Come on up, Scott.
Here.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Great. All right, so. I guess we'll. Just. Do public comments.
You might want to let folks know, Mr. Mayor, there's a public comment period in the regular meeting, and the purpose of this special meeting is so you can do this proclamation that came in a little late, so.
Okay, okay, great. And the pledge we can do at the regular meeting as well.
We didn't put the pledge on here, but we're required to put public comment.
Yeah.
On all meetings.
Okay, got it. Okay, so as as our city manager just said, we're kind of going through a few bullet points here and the agenda for this special meeting is just a proclamation of the City of Larkspur declaring November 12th to 18th as United Against Hate Week. So if anybody has any public comment, please step forward to the mic and let us know your name and where you live. Doesn't look like we have anybody and we're not doing Zoom. We'll get to that. That's the next meeting, which is in about five minutes. So. And we don't have any public comment from Zoom tonight. So with that, we'll just step right into item number three, which is the presentation proclamation. And I won't read it in its entirety. It's posted, but just the gist here. So whereas the City of Larkspur stands for diversity, inclusivity, and respect for all irrespective of race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, disability, or any characteristic. And whereas we reject hate, discrimination, and violence aiming for a prejudice-free community. Whereas we collectively promote acceptance, respect, and tolerance and unity, enabling residents to live, work, and thrive without fear. Be it resolved that during this week reaffirm our commitment to the following principles. One, we denounce hate, discrimination, and violence in all forms. Two, we pledge to stand up against hate and support victims of hate incidents. Three, we encourage open dialogue and respectful conversations to bridge divides and promote understanding. And finally, number four, we celebrate the richness of our diverse community and the strength it brings to the city. So with that, we, I just want to say that, you know, we've had in the last few weeks, some, you know, Zoom bombing and and there have been other incidents throughout the county, and I really feel that I speak for the council that we're, this is a, you know, completely obvious that our number one job as elected is public safety. And public safety is not just the police department, the fire department, but it's also safety from any intimidation or harassment or feelings of, you know, of hate. So this is something that we really stand behind and we hope that the community helps promote this as well. And with that, I get to the last item, number nine, we'll adjourn and move to our regular meeting.
So, Mr. Mayor, just for the record note, one of the reasons we had to call the special meeting is there's an effort throughout the county for all the jurisdictions to pass this proclamation, and your next meeting is actually after the start of the week in question.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so with that, let's start our regular meeting. It's six thirty-six and Sasha, maybe one more time, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Way.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Carol.
Here.
Councilmember Handel.
I am here.
Here, thank you. And as you're able, let's rise and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the public who stands foundation.
Thank you. And again, the the next item as before is public comment, and this is for any item not on the agenda. And just so you know, tonight, we really only have besides the consent calendar, one business item, which is the certification of the referendum, the rent control petition. So if you have anything, any comment outside of that agenda item, please come up to the mic and tell us your name and be glad to listen. Go ahead.
James Holmes, Larkspur, I cannot overstate my disappointment and my surprise that the council seized on one single brief, obnoxious outburst over a month ago as an excuse to end Zoom comment by all citizens. This is execrable collective punishment of citizens who had nothing to do with that objectionable episode that you have now used to cut off this avenue of expression that proved so valuable. For seniors, especially for seniors and the less mobile and while health concerns predominate. Ironically, the key item on tonight's agenda is one that previously produced extensive comment via Zoom. Now you've cut it off. This punitive action puts you in a tiny minority of Marin jurisdictions. Corte Madera allows Zoom. So does the county. Ditto San Anselmo, Belvedere, Ross, Sausalito, Fairfax, Tiburon, which was Zoom bombed the same night you were. All except San Rafael and Nevada temporarily, they stress, and Mill Valley. When I read that Mill Valley had banned Zoom comment, I thought naively, well, at least Larkspur needn't worry about such a draconian overreaction. Banning Zoom commented especially egregious because controlling the abuse is so easy. I hope you got and read my letter which told you how. And there's more ways. Your agenda says you only hear comments on matters under your jurisdiction. The abuser's subject matter stated most charitably is the merits of various races and religions, a matter totally outside your jurisdiction. Hence, at the first impropriety, all a council member needs to do is to say objection irrelevant. And the clerk mutes the caller. The muted caller is then invited to demonstrate the relevance of the proposed comment to the council's jurisdiction, which of course the caller can't do, and if they understood what was being asked. Since controlling abuse is so easy, there's no excuse for a Zoom comment ban. Cutting it off should have been your last resort, not your first. Failure to restore Zoom comment will put your council in a very unfavorable light as respects technology use, convenient public comment, and courage. Please end immediately the Zoom comment ban, which is as unjustifiable as it is unjust.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to presentations and proclamations, which we already had.
I have a comment. About Zoom presence. That's between the mayor and city manager to decide it and when they both separately, no violation of the Brown Act, asked my opinion, my very first question was how do we deal with Mr. James Holmes? That's how important I think you are, Jim, to this community. You and I have disagreed on a couple of major subjects in the last year. But I respect your opinion. I had solicited and I learned something from you. You have contributed both through the historic preservation meetings and the planning commission with your knowledge of the history of the city and McJohn area in particular. And I just want you to know, we do value your opinion. And I hope we can work something out. So when you can't be physically present at those meetings, you still have your very valuable input. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that, Councilmember Carol. And I appreciate your comments very much as well. Any other comments? Okay, so moving on, then there are no presentation proclamations, so let's just move to item number four, which is the approval of the consent calendar. And tonight we have, it looks like four items, and does anybody on the council wish to pull an item? Okay, does anybody in the chamber or want to pull item for further consideration or deliberation? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to pass the consent calendar as a whole, all four items.
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Great, we have a motion second. Sasha, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, and then that'll take us to the city managers' oral report. City manager, could we please get her?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. First, I wanted to reiterate some information that I provided at the last council meeting, which is that the March 5th, 2024 election is not too far away. There is going to be on that ballot the filling of the vacant seat to complete the term. It's a term that goes through November 2026. And the nomination period, so the period in which you can come pull papers, begins on November 13 and closes on December 8 at the close of business, which is 5:00 PM. The city clerk works on an appointment basis, so interested individuals should reach out to the city clerk's office. And the easiest way to do that is to write an email to cityclerk@cityolarkspur.org. And this is probably an apropos time to tell the council, as you know, our city clerks on leave shall be back early 2024. And now our interim city clerk is out until November 27, so I've appointed myself the deputy city clerk. And so folks will just have to be patient as I marshal my way through the city clerk duties as best I can. Luckily, we have a great team behind us. As you know, Sasha's here to help, and we've got some other folks to make sure we dot all our i's and cross all our t's. The other thing in that new capacity that I wanted to just make sure the public hears about it, I know the council knows this, but we've had a surprising number of members of the public emailing to the city clerk making political statements or comments that they want distributed, and then they include, but I want to be anonymous. And I just want folks to understand you can't legally be anonymous and submit a public comment. By California law, those comments become part of the public record and have to be made available to anyone who requests them. So before folks hit send on an email, understand you can't cannot actually, we can't guarantee anonymity except in very specific cases. And most of these are folks who just want to make a public comment. So I encourage folks, if they aren't comfortable including their name and address, that they find another way to get their opinion expressed to the council than to send us a written comment. So with that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay, yeah.
I recall at some point in our many meetings about rent stabilization, that a landlord was allowed to submit written comment and it was a part of the record because she feared retaliation. So as long as it's treated to both sides and on all issues, other than this one, I have no problem with it. But I I remember being surprised that that was included and assumed. It was okay for people to submit that form.
I don't recall the situation that you're stating, but I don't, if it was and it came in by email, the email address is available to any member of the public that requests a copy of what was submitted.
Okay.
So I don't know specifically, Councilmember Carol, what that material was and how it arrived at the city.
It struck me at the time because it concerned me that someone would feel that way. You know, that they would be retaliated against. And I've had a number of tenants express the same concern with particularly some of the larger landlords. So I just.
Again, I, without remembering that instance, I just want people to understand the minute that email arrives, it's public record.
Is there a way to include that in the instructions? In the?
That comments are not anonymous if they're sent to this email address?
Yeah.
I could probably put something on the website. I assume that's how most folks are submitting their comment. I can put something on the agenda.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful. Because I think this is another problem with social media. It's people here, they can do this, and maybe it's true in other communities. I don't know.
That's not true anywhere in the state of California.
But again, social media wrong hates us that they can do it. So I think it moves us to a group.
But remember, people can also have a speaker who represents a consortium of individuals, and those individuals' voices can be heard through a representative of a group or an agency. So they still have opportunities to express anonymously if they want to do it that way, too. So.
Okay.
I have a quick question. I was going to save it for later, but you know, you brought up the election coming up. Could you clarify for everybody? The rent control that we're discussing now, if we decide to put it on the ballot, if that goes on the March ballot or the November ballot and?
Mr. Litter should address that during the agenda item.
Okay, got it. All right, I will wait.
Okay, great. So any other questions for our city manager? Looks like we don't. So with that, let's go to item number six, which are council members' oral reports and comments. Anybody want to go? Oh, council member Way, please.
So I'm one of our representatives to the Project Home Key on 1251 South Aliso. If everyone is aware, that is a permanent supportive housing project that has been initiated by the state 2020 in 2021 and resides on 1251 South Aliso Boulevard. So we've been, I've been on that committee now for a year, and I, as of last week, 33 residents have moved in of the 43 single occupancy studio apartments that have been created there for permanently supportive housing for for residents of Marin and others, and they have moved in 33, and they hope to staff up by the end of the have fully amount of residents. There are lots of interests in the community to help be supportive of these residents who are now, are now living in permanent supportive housing in our community. So the Larkspur Community Foundation has volunteered and gotten the support of Molly Stones to provide a Thanksgiving meal in the group kitchen that is available on this property. So for those in the community who are interested in getting involved in this project, which is new to Larkspur, but these are new residents who will be here similar to what we have behind us near St. Pat's with Project Home Key that came in there. They can reach out to the Larkspur Community Foundation and see if they're interested in helping support the community. That's all I had.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Way. Councilmember Carol.
I was very quiet at the Transportation Authority Marin meeting. Relatively for me. But I did listen a lot. And one of the members was talking about the Mill Valley Bike Citation Program where they're monitoring the middle and high school students in particular. Or shall we say, bad behavior on bikes. They described some of the issues they've had, like three kids on a bike or going the wrong way on the wrong side of Miller Street. Or Camino Alto, et cetera. So they've issued 44 citations. Forty-three of which were being referred to, this is since the start of school in August. Forty-three have been opted for a safe bicycling course taught by the Bicycle Coalition. Only one kid is fighting the citation and refusing to pay the fine that is supposed to be paid. I didn't get a chance to ask if he was the son of lawyers. But I have a strong suspicion coming from that background myself. The funding for state drought for school should be announced in the next week, and so hopefully I'll have more information about that. A big item to me was under the American Infrastructure Act. The money's finally, which Mr. Biden pushed through a year or two ago, the money's finally in the pipeline. And in the next two years, the federal dollars for transportation and other infrastructure projects is going to jump from $3 billion to about $30 billion. And quite a few different programs will be emphasized. The one that I found very interesting was a part of it called Justice 40, where some of the programs, at least 40% of the money has to go to deprived communities. And the communities they listed included San Quentin. And I can imagine there's 5,000 people there who would love federal money to get out of town. But I think hopefully it's something we can monitor and particularly in light of the increase in employees that are going to happen in San Quentin over the next couple of years, as it transitions to a more education and rehabilitation facility in the Oak Hill Apartments and their effects on traffic. I would assume the Oak Hill might fall within that jurisdiction. It's something that I'll follow up on. Another kind of, to me, interesting point about the Justice 40 is they listed Hamilton, the canal area and San Quentin. So I asked the question, why not Marin City? And I was told, no, we'll check on that. And sure enough, about a half hour later, the person responsible came up and said, oh, yeah, we just overlooked it when making up the slide. I hope Marin City doesn't hear about that because that's their biggest complaint for the last 50 years that I followed these issues in Marin County of them being neglected and overlooked. But it kind of demonstrates the importance of monitoring these organizations to make sure we don't lose out on anything. And that's it.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Carol. And by the way, thanks for making it the meeting. And I had a quick comment, you know, given our proclamation, United Against Hate Week, the Lark Theater will be screening a film called Repairing Our World: Stories From The Tree Of Life. And some of you may recall, the Tree Of Life was the synagogue in Pittsburgh that I think 18 people were shot and killed back in 2018, I think, October. So that is going on again, November 15th is two weeks from today, Wednesday, 5:30, and and there will be many people there, some of the county supervisors plan to attend as well as, you know, other council members. I'll probably go for the beginning. We have a council meeting shortly after that. And with that, I believe we're done. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Candell.
Yeah, so just, I know, I know we don't say anything. Just very quick, let's let everybody know, the new library, everything is moving forward. We have architects and designers, builders that we're working with. There are three of them. We're in the process of getting down to one. The mayor and I are on an observation committee just to, you know, watch how it goes and to report back to you. So just want the report back. It's moving forward, and we'll keep you posted.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so with that, we're done with our council member oral reports, and that takes us to item number seven, which are public hearings, and we have none tonight. So we'll go straight to business items, and there's one business item tonight, and that's 8.1, Certification Of Results Of Examination Of Referendum Petition Against Ordinance Number 10767, which was regarding the establishing rent stabilization regulations and required actions pursuant to the Elections Code. So there's quite a bit to unpack here, so I'll just hand it over to the city manager and the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to repeat the entire staff report, but I will hit on the essential points. As councilors are aware, on September 6th of this year, you adopted ordinance number 1067, which established a rent stabilization program for the city. Under California law, ordinances don't go into effect for 30 days after adoption. Also, under state law, that same 30-day period is the timeframe in which residents can circulate a referendum petition to attempt to overturn an ordinance that the city council has adopted. On September 28th, I'm sorry, October 28th. Let me make sure I've got the September 28th. Thank you. The city received a referendum petition. The acting city clerk and the city manager did what's called a prima facie review, which is just to look at the face of the petition, check that technical issues have been complied with, just not based on a thorough review, but just a an initial review. And then they also just checked to see how many signatures appear on the face of the petition to see whether or not it's enough to send it to the county to verify that there are actual enough registered voter signatures on the petition. The petition was sent to the county, and last week we received a certificate from the registrar of voters stating that there were an adequate number of valid signatures on the petition to qualify the referendum. The number is 10% of registered voters in the city. And the registrar concluded, after reviewing those signatures, that there were enough, including removing the signatures for which valid signature withdrawal requests had been submitted. That being the case, under state law, the next step is that the city clerk is required to submit a certificate related to the petition to the city council, and you have two choices. You can either repeal the ordinance or you can submit it to the voters for the voters to decide whether or not to leave the law in place or repeal it. The last election that you can schedule this for consideration by the voters, if you choose that option, is the November 2024 election, which is the next city council election. But you can also place it on the ballot at a special election on an established election date next year. As you know, as we just discussed, the March primary election is an established election date. There is also an established election date in June. At this time, it's not clear whether or not anything else would be on that ballot. And so it might be that this would be a standalone item, but it is an option available to the council if you are interested in that choice. So to summarize, we've attached to the staff report an ordinance that you could introduce and would then at the next meeting adopt to repeal ordinance 1067. That is an option. The other option that's available to you is to schedule this to go to the voters. March and November would be the most likely choices for that because there would be other, we know that there will be other things on the ballot on those dates, but June is also available to you. What we'd seek from you is either is, is I, you do not have to adopt the ordinance tonight, but it is available to you if you, or to introduce, it is available to you if you want to do that. And otherwise, if you would like to submit this to the voters, we would appreciate getting direction from you about which election you'd like to schedule it for, and then we'd come back with a resolution to do that. If you want to schedule it for the March 2024 election, December 8th is the last date to do that, so we would likely bring this back to you at the next regular meeting or probably the next regular meeting to take that action. With that, I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you, Sky. Any questions for Sky, for our city attorney?
Yeah, but let Kevin go. You save your voice. All right, I'll start then. So a couple of questions. The petitioners. Uh, the petitioners, I and I know I get these uh petitioners are qualified to have initiated a petition as residents of Larkspur.
So the official proponent of the referendum, in this case, it was a singular person. Um, uh, we'd have verified that that person is a registered voter of Larkspur.
So that was one question. Um, the timeline for putting, uh, the second question is if the uh, the the language of the ordinance, let's say we um agree for at March for it to go to the ballot. The language of that ordinance, does that come from the petitioner or does that come from you? And how is the process in which the petitioner can approve or disapprove, or do they have that option of the language?
Um, I, in consultation with the city manager, would uh prepare a draft of the ballot question that would appear on the ballot. Ultimately, the city council has to approve that as part of taking action to schedule the election. Um, there are some minimal state standards for that um that are supplemented by case law. Basically, it has to be factual, non-argumentative, not biased in favor of one position or the other, and present within seventy-five words a reasonable summary of the question. Uh, we would also uh put into the voter information guide the actual text of the ordinance for voters to consider. Um, and then if the proponents or any other member of the community had an objection to the form of the question um as approved by the city council, they would have to go to court to um have a judge uh modify that.
And then in the voter information handbook, when you have the pros and cons that are submitted, would the petitioner then be the um individual responsible or the group responsible for getting a, let's say, a pro or a con statement in there?
Um, if the proponent chose to submit an argument in favor of the referendum, um, that argument would receive priority if there were others submitted. Uh, they're not required to submit one, but if they do, and there are others, then the proponents will be the one that's printed.
And to get to the March ballot, all this has to be decided by December eighth, or is there a different timeframe?
It is December eighth. So, yeah, so we could, we, the latest that you'd be able to do it is the first regular meeting in December.
Uh, and then my last question at this point, I hope I'm answering, getting some of Kevin's in there. Um, does this require a simple majority or a super majority? I don't, I mean, I know certain parcel taxes, et cetera, require a certain uh number.
It's just a simple majority of voters voting on the question.
Okay. Okay, that's what I have for now.
Lady questions. Hypothetically, that's my favorite word.
I know that's your favorite, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Candell.
Um, hypothetically, let's say there was uh another group that wanted to put a competing ballot measure on with a competing rent control ordinance. How would that work? And would the same rules apply that we're just talking about as far as they would, they submit a petition, uh, they get the signatures, it would go to you, and then you would uh come up with the language that would be put on the on the ballot? Is it is it the same process?
It's similar, but but there are some substantial differences. Um, so with a referendum, uh, that process initiates with the city council adopting legislation. And then um there's a very short time period, as I said, thirty days for them to gather enough signatures to force the council to reconsider it and either repeal it or submit it to the voters. For an initiative process, um, where legislation is initiated by the voters themselves, um, a short version of the process is um that they submit the proposed legislation to the city. It gets forwarded to me. I prepare ballot title and summary. They then have to prepare a form of the petition that gets reviewed by the city clerk's office to verify that it meets technical requirements. Once that's completed, they can start gathering signatures. Uh, they have, I think it's a hundred and eighty days to gather signatures. Um, so if assuming that they submit the petitions within that time period, then that process is similar where there's a prima facie review. It goes to the registrar of voters to verify that it has enough valid s- signatures from registered voters. Then it comes back um to the staff and we bring it to the council. And then the council has the option to either adopt the ordinance as submitted or submit it to the voters. Uh, and similarly, it can be it, the the election on it would be either at the city council's next uh city council election, or you can schedule it for a for a special election uh before that date, but not later than eighty-eight days. Relative to next year's um election dates, just as a practical matter, there is no way at this point in time to qualify an initiative for the March twenty twenty four.
So it would be November.
So it would be November.
Okay, yeah, I answered my question. Thank you.
And to that extent, the costs involved for, do we have any idea what the cost involved for that is?
The cost would be about the same as are in the staff report, which is because it's really, because, well, for for March or November, it would be the same.
Because we're already having elections.
Because it's because there's already elections and it's basically uh per voter cost, it's a per voter cost. Um, but it's spread among all of the different um entities that have matters on that ballot. So the more things that are on the ballot, the lower the per voter costs. I don't know if you had an addition.
Just one caveat to, it's the same cost because the city already has items on those ballots. If, I don't know, if an initiative was such that it landed on a ballot, the city was not scheduled to put anything on that ballot, then the cost would be higher.
Isn't so, so for example, the June election next year, not only would there not be another city item at this point in time, there would not be, there, we don't know whether or not other matters would be on the ballot, so so the, none of the costs would be spread to other entities potentially.
So there's potential to have two com- I don't want to say competing, but similar um ballot measures uh on the same ballot with um, I mean, we we might face that situation too. One overturning the ordinance ten sixty seven and the other putting forward a different proposed um rent stabilization profile.
Hypothetically, uh, in November, uh, you could have the referendum on the ordinance that was adopted by the city council as well as a voter-sponsored initiative to adopt a different rent stabilization ordinance. Um, and you could have any combination of outcomes there with the cities being upheld, but the voter-sponsored ordinance not passing. You could have the referendum succeeding and repealing the city's ordinance, but the voter-sponsored um initiative passing. You could have both of them. You you could have voters reject all forms of rent stabilization, or you could have, you know, there there are multiple things that could occur.
And my last question, is there um rules in which the um citizen-driven petition can be um except substantially different from state law, fourteen eighty-two? So let's say, uh, can a city uh driven petition or a consumer-based driven petition want to say, let's say, rent control is uh raises is only one percent? And that's significantly lower than current state law. Is that allowed to happen?
They're allowed to write it that way. Um, I I'm not sure that it would be legally defensible, and I would anticipate a legal challenge to to um an ordinance that that imposed a rent cap that low.
If the state law is five percent plus CPI up to ten?
Well, remember from the discussions that we have about rent stabilization that um property owners are legally entitled to a fair return.
Right.
Um, if a rent stabilization ordinance capped rent increases at one percent with no opportunity for a property owner to um demonstrate that they had incurred costs that would allow them to exceed that cap, um, the ordinance would potentially be depriving them of a fair rate of return, and I would anticipate a legal challenge to that.
But even if it isn't hypothetically so low, like let's say one percent, but very close to existing state law, a pro- a property owner could still contest it if they felt they weren't getting an adequate rate of return?
Yes.
Okay.
I just don't want to make sure we're not confusing folks, so.
Okay.
The the amount that any citizen-initiated uh proposal
Yeah.
sets as the cap, as long as it's at or lower than state law is okay. Doesn't really matter what the number is. The point that Mr. Wood is making is the proposed ordinance would also need to include a method by which a a property owner could petition to exceed whatever that number is. But but the number itself, as long as it's equal to or less than state law, can be valid and go on the ballot. I I want to make sure that distinction's there.
Yeah, just do one, one more. We we passed rent, uh, we print, we passed rent stabilization and just cause evictions as two different ordinances. Would these have, would a, this referendum um is asking for the overturning of one of those ordinances? Would um a citizen-driven petition to put something on the ballot need to engage just one of those ordinances, or could they do both?
Um, an initiative could
It's too late for
What's too late to do a referendum on the just cause for eviction?
Because it's past thirty days.
Exactly. Um, the, if a voter-sponsored initiative um could attempt to address uh both rent stabilization and just cause, um. There is a constitutional provision that says that a voter-sponsored initiative um has to be confined to a single subject. There is a court-driven test for whether or not something um satisfies that test or not. Um, I, I'm not gonna, I don't have an opinion at this point in time about whether or not a hypothetical ordinance that addressed both would be compliant with that rule. Um, but hypothetically, they could, a voter-sponsored initiative could um propose both a different rent stabilization um framework and also a different just cause um framework and uh basically simultaneously supersede what the city council adopted.
I'm done.
Yeah, I got one more, then we'll go to you, and hopefully we answer all your questions.
Last one is um if there's a citizen-driven petition, um are we neutral in that situation and are you, as a city attorney, um, in a position to say, hey, you may want to tweak this because it's got some legal issues, and if it passes, it's gonna get challenged? Or do we just be like, you gotta get your own lawyer and good luck, and we're we're neutral?
Uh, we are in almost all cases neutral. Um, there have been some instances in which um I have, after consulting with city manager and the mayor or the whole city council, um, advised a proponent that that uh proposed initiative contained a provision that would um, would, that would, that would almost certainly invalidate it as written. And I did that only because um and it was an unusual circumstance, and I did not want to get to the end of the process where they had, they had collected all the signatures and submitted it and be accused of 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 ambushing them with this surprise after the fact. Um, but in most cases, I and the city are neutral. Um, I am required to, as I said, prepare a ballot title and summary. Uh, state law and 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 the courts have said that that the title and the summary have to be impartial, factual, uh, not biased, not argumentative, represent a fair summary of the law. Um, and then the city council and the city, while while you are entitled legally to have a viewpoint about what's being proposed, um, you are not allowed to spend public resources to, in effect, campaign against it. And for the most part, during the signature gathering process, you, the expectation and the legal requirement is not to interfere with that process.
And and as a city council, like if we have a meeting and or can we give an opinion about it, or is that not?
You are absolutely allowed to request that staff do provide you with an analysis of what's being proposed. Um, in fact, there is a provision within the Elections Code that specifically says that the city council um can request a report about a proposed initiative that analyzes its potential impacts in summary. And you, as a city council, as part of that meeting, are certainly allowed to express your opinions about it and your viewpoints. Um, that is encapsulated within the 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 protected speech of of members of the city council. It's just outside of that context, using public resources to campaign against it, using your own time and resources. If you opposed it, you would absolutely be entitled to to um to work against it.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Councilmember Carol.
Thank you. You did ask a couple of the questions I was going to. Whether this appears on the March or November ballot, how would the voting actually work? Would a yes vote uphold the ordinance? And deny the referendum or vice versa?
Oh, let me do a quick check because the legislature has altered this, and I just want to make sure that I get it correct. Uh, but I do have the statute right here. Actually, can I, w- once you move on to the discussion, let me double check that and get back to you on that one.
Be for the city manager and city clerk. If it's on either ballot, I assume anyone can submit an argument for or against. Do we know yet what those costs would be? And the limit on the words, I assume it would be, wasn't it two fifty?
I don't have a sense what the cost would be yet. I think
Does anyone remember? I got stuck in a seven-guard pileup today, so I didn't get home in time.
The city attorney knows the word limit, so he's gonna tell you what it is.
Assuming that the city, the city council could set it lower, but typically um art, the direct arguments um can't exceed three hundred words and the rebuttal can't exceed uh, let me find that just to double check, two hundred and fifty. Um, the the costs of printing those in the voter information guide are included within the per voter costs for the election that are in the staff report.
Does anyone remember what they paid for the last argument?
Uh, we've typ- we've typically followed what's in state law, so it would have been three hundred for direct and two fifty for rebuttal.
Yeah, no, but I meant the cost.
We we bear that cost.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, for our argument or the or the referendum's argument?
We bear the cost of the entire ballot in this case and the
No, if, for instance, the tenants association want to do an anti or pro argument, they can do two hundred and fifty words and the city pays for it.
Provided that that's the entity that the elections officer selects, because we may receive multiple arguments, and it's the purview of the election officer to select one of those arguments, because only one argument appears in the ballot.
Ah, so if, okay.
And
That's understood.
And that has happened. We've had to choose, and we try to choose the one that contains the least amount of factual problems.
Okay. That question for the city attorney, do you got any idea how many hours you've spent on this issue? Including rent stabilization and um tenant protections?
Off off the top of my head, I do not. I I could certainly, you know, I would not have the answer for you tonight. If, I know, I really, I can't, I don't even have a ballpark for you. If you were interested, I could, I'd have to have somebody review our invoices for for the last year, fourteen, fifteen months to to pull out the number.
Are there any other council members that would like that information at the next meeting?
What, for what purpose?
Uh, my closing argument tonight will demonstrate why I'm interested. So, okay, um, and then I, same question for staff hours, any rough I knew?
Um, so I've been your primary analyst due to lack of availability of other staff people, and I would probably suspect that I've I'd have to go do a rough tally because I didn't keep track hour by hour. But if if I had to guess, it's probably on the magnitude of of like forty solid working hours, which may not sound like a lot, that's a lot of time for me to just be working on one.
Yeah, you do have a
Issue, uh, that doesn't include the council meetings. That's just the
Yeah.
Task. I probably tasked another twenty solid working hours to people who made phone calls for me. Um, and then that doesn't include post you passing the ordinance, I've probably put in another twenty hours doing the shopping on the various resources to implement the ordinance, um, when and if it goes into effect.
Okay, that's rough numbers, all I'm asking. And then the last one is, I know we were at nine hundred pages previously, and do you think we've hit over a thousand now in staff reports and backup material?
Uh, I bet we're close.
The Bible was twelve hundred. I'm just
Well, public, public comments There, so we we probably with all the emails, we've probably hit a thousand.
Okay, yeah, well, the Bible is twelve hundred. I think, I think we're gonna beat it at some point down here. And that's my questions, and thanks for the indulgence.
Maybe raise the temperature a little. I see we have a lot of uncomfortable people.
Yeah, yeah, it's, sure. Are there any windows open? It looks like they're closed. Maybe we can close the chamber door.
No, they just have to raise it a human, a few degrees.
Okay. Yeah, it has gotten chilly.
Yeah, it has gotten chilly.
Okay, when it came in here, an hour before the meeting, it was seventy-five degrees and here it's pretty hot, so we were trying to cool it down, so.
Okay, so.
A little aggressive.
Well, hopefully that'll warm us up a little bit. Um, just, uh, we'll go to public comment in a second. Um. Uh, just to kind of summarize what, what I think I understood. So, uh, the option before us tonight is you know, ordinance ten sixty-seven, the council here could, uh, ask to repeal, in which case the language and the ordinance that, that would come back next meeting and, and we could move and vote and repeal ten sixty-seven. And the alternative is to submit it to the voters for approval. And the timing that I got is that we could do this in March on the fifth. And if we did it on that date, the only thing that could be on the ballot on this matter would be the referendum and the ordinance. So there, there isn't time for, for any voter initiatives or anything else to come up. Is, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It, it is, as a practical matter at this point, there really, I would, I haven't done a full calculation of the statutory timelines, but as a practical matter, there's no way to qualify an, an initiative by, by the statutory deadline of December eighth.
Okay, great, because I'm, I'm concerned about a, a really cluttered ballot, ballot, but you know, as it stands, the city council approved ten sixty-seven. Uh, it didn't go into effect and it's been challenged and now it could go to the voters. And either in June or November, uh, something could, and that would have an outcome, you know, regardless. And, and then that outcome might be challenged in June or November.
As just a comment, as participating now in the city clerk world, uh, you can rest assured that both of these ballots are gonna be rather substantial. So if you're worried about one being more cluttered than the other, that shouldn't be something you calculate. Both these ballots can be large.
Okay, I meant just around Larkspur's rent control, you know, not, that, there wouldn't be, you know, three choices or four choices. Really either sixty-seven, yes or no in March, and then in June and November, there would be another decision to be made. So, so the voter would kind of be binary in March and bin- binary choice. Um. Okay, and with that, I would like to open this up to public comment. So anybody in the chamber who would like to speak, same thing, just come up to the mic, let us know your name, uh, where you live and, uh, tonight, um, because we're in the chamber, why don't we go for three minutes? So, uh, I don't know if this timer's working, I'm just gonna use my, my, uh. Yeah, uh, give me one second, please. Uh, if you, if you can do it, that'd be great. Um, oh, okay. Sorry, give me one sec. Okay, great. Yeah.
Technology once again.
Here we go. Okay, we're set to go. We got three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Christina. I live in Bonner. Thank you for the opportunity allowing me to share my views regarding the recently passed rent stabilization ordinance. We are in unprecedented economic times in this country. Marin County is not immune from the stresses of providing decent housing at fair prices, resulting in a fair and thriving economic base for the county. When weighing the positives and negatives of the ordinance, I believe the positives outweigh the negatives. And the ordinance should be implemented in full. Here is why I feel this way. Number one, a cap of five percent plus inflation or seven percent is very fair to building owners. In a worst-case scenario, where landlords can increase rent by seven percent annually, the rent for a typical unit will double every ten years. People's income will not double every ten years, even when accounting for high inflation. Number two, the value of a building is not only determined by the contract rent of the rental agreements. The cost of capital, a rent multiplier and/or the current market capitalization rate also play a big part in the value of a building. There is also scarcity of the availability of buildings for sale. The old supply and demand equation. Three, landlords have more ways and opportunities to get a return on their buildings than tenants have in increasing their income. In the long run, the seven percent cap will always be ahead of the average annual wage increase. Number four, I do understand that over time, older buildings require more maintenance and upgrades than newer buildings. Other than essential maintenance, landlords can control what they spend on upgrading appliances, carpets, et cetera, by including the language in the lease informing tenants that there are expected lifespans of certain tenant improvements. And that automatic upgrades will not take place. In fact, tenants can invest their own funds if they want to upgrade what previously landlords would do for free or automatically. Five, landlords should make a profit. Landlords who are disciplined know how to obtain fixed cost long-term mortgages, which fixes their largest expense for up to ten-plus years. Tenants don't have that luxury with regards to their salary. Six, without a cap on rent, Marin will become just another California location where the middle and working class have been chased out and forced into long commutes to hold on to their jobs in Marin. For all these reasons, the rent stabilization ordinance seems to me to be a fairly well-balanced ordinance, allowing for reasonable profits to the providers of rental housing and providing tenants with some level of peace of mind that their rent won't exponentially increase beyond their wage level. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Christina. Okay, um, next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm, um, Anne Clark from, uh, Loxbury, Loxbury Courts. Um, please, uh, do not schedule an election on the referendum. Um, the city council did everything right. Uh, thank you, by the way, for patiently hearing us, hearing both sides, uh, through the lengthy process of a year's worth of public meetings. Um. The city council put all the required postings of the, all these public meetings. There have been several articles uh, in all the local newspapers on the rent control, uh, ordinance adoption. Um, and there have been postings on well-known social media sites, at least, um, next door from several landlords, several renters alike. Uh, these rent control meetings uh, have been attended by both sides of the discussion. Uh, landlords and renters alike. Both sides have consistently attended and, um, several from both sides have spoken on these discuss, on this discussion and debate. So all of these public meetings were done correctly by the city council members and by the Loxbury residents and landlords that attended the meeting, um, and came to a decided majority vote for the ordinance ten sixty-seven. But a tactic done by devious landlord, using a petition written to confuse Loxbury residents voters puts a big detour in this democratic process that the city council members and both sides, landlords and renters, have consistently attended. So please do not reward these devious tactics by the landlords. The one with all the money dissuade the voters. Please do not schedule an election on the referendum. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, yeah, if we can hold applause, that'd be great. Uh, next speaker.
Hello, council members. My name is Jockey. I'm representing the Skylak Tenants Association. Just quickly saying that we had, we have a lot of, um, neighbors who are on Zoom, so it's disappointing that we actually can't give public comment that way. Um, speaking about, um, as you're aware, the owners of Bon Air Apartments operating under, under Hummingbird Hill LP, who are Loxbury's largest landlords, have qualified for this referendum using highly deceptive tactics, using paid canvassers who consistently misrepresented the petition. They were circulating as a pro rent control measure when in fact, it's, its aim is to repeal rent control. Given these manipulative tactics and the fact that the existing rent stabilization ordinance passed through the city council is the weakest in the entire state, capping annual rent increases at seven percent, it's clear to us that Bon Air is not simply trying to undo the law. They are trying to undermine the grassroots ballot initiative being organized by Loxbury tenants to pass a much stronger law that would actually keep renters in their homes. Scheduling an election for the referendum at the same time tenants are organizing to qualify for a ballot initiative will sow widespread confusion among Loxbury voters, so that people won't know what they are voting for or against. Voting for and against. This will undermine both our local democratic progress, process and the integrity of either elections results. For elections to matter, there needs to be clear choice presented to voters. That's why we're asking for the, we're asking for the Loxbury City Council to rescind the rent stabilization ordinance entirely and not to schedule an election on the referendum. That will provide a clean slate for the, for the tenant ballot initiative to present a clear, concise choice to Loxbury voters. Shall Loxbury pass rent control or not? If the council does decide that they must schedule an election, that it's imperative that it is to be scheduled for March twenty twenty-four, not November twenty twenty-four. This will minimize voter confusion, as everybody, everybody has brought up and you all have brought up as well, between the referendum and the ballot initiative. We urge the city council to not let the owners of Bon Air Apartments use this referendum to confuse voters and undermine democratic process. Thank you.
Jockey, can I ask you a quick question? Is it okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, i- if you just, just, uh, expand a little bit, um. If we have this on the ballot in March, and it's the only rent control on the ballot in March. My understanding is, is if you have a competing, uh, rent stabilization ordinance, it wouldn't be until November. There's not gonna be campaigning and it's not two competing campaigns at the same time. I, I guess I'm, I'm struggling to understand the fear of confusion if there's only one gonna be on the ballot in March and then only one in November.
Yeah, and I think what we're saying is that if it, if you all vote to have it on the, to go to the, the, the ballot, then we're requesting that it's in March. Our preference is to have it rescinded just so that we can actually, we as ten, as residents and, and, and your constituents actually go to the ballot in November. And then you will see and we'll get to decide if we want a, a rent control that truly protects us or not. But you're right, it will be less confusing if it was in March.
A- a- and, and just to be clear, uh, if we have one in March and let's say the voters choose to keep the rent stabilization, there's nothing stopping a group from putting something on in November to make it a stricter rent stabilization ordinance and have the voters say, are we, do we want it to be seven or do we want it to be three? I mean, that, that's not preventing the voters from doing that in November. Is, do you agree with that?
I agree with that and, and we are planning to bring, um, uh, uh, you know, a citizens, uh, initiated ballot in November. And we've been very, you know, very open and, and transparent about that. So we, we've been working on it since, uh, for the last several months.
Okay, thank you for answering my questions. I appreciate it.
Of course.
So just to clarify that, that comment that we would vote to put it on the March ballot, let's say hypothetically, it's really not our, um, decision. Our decision is whether we, we maintain the ordinance that we already voted on or we repeal it. And then the petitioner puts it on the ballot, not us putting it on the ballot. Am I correct with that? I just wanna make sure it's, because.
Referendum that's before you tonight or this potential initiative?
No, the, the one that we're working on tonight.
Y- y- one of your choices is when to schedule the vote if the council chooses to submit it to voters. So the initial decision is, uh, repeal or submit it to the voters. And then the next question is when to schedule the election, if that's the council's choice.
So if the choice is we don't repeal it, that, uh, we're saying we voted on it, we're keeping it the way it is hypothetically. The petitioner still can put it on the ballot in March.
You have to put it on the ballot.
Okay, so that's where.
Yes, you, your only options at this point are either to repeal it or to schedule it for a vote. Then the choice is when to put it, when to hold the vote.
Okay, so we were still doing public comment, but, but those are very helpful clarifications. Uh, next public comment, please. Are we warm enough in the room? I think it's, it's heated up. Yeah, I also was starting to shiver in my boots. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Christina Jacqua and, uh, I'm with the Bon Air Apartments. I'm really relatively new to renting. I owned my own home for forty-five years. So, um, this whole thing with rent control, I was one of the people witnesses. I was one of the people that signed this petition, which, I mean, in my mind, first, I'm saying I'm was very naive and everybody else who signed that petition was also naive. And if I hadn't been told that this was, I was being duped into this, and I'm sure most of the people who have kept their signatures on this are still totally unaware of what was going on. All I heard, and of course, again, I was being really stupid, all I heard was rent control and are you a voter? And that was it. And, you know, the guy said a few things and I thought, okay, this makes a lot of sense, et cetera, et cetera. And so I signed it. But I mean, really, when you think about it, who in their right mind would not want rent control? Who, what renter really would be all right with all these ridiculous increases? That's all. This, I mean, it just makes no sense that anybody would really voluntarily sign it, knowing what was actually at stake.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, uh, Christina. Uh, next comment, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, I just want, I just want to, um, reiterate what I have spoken to before. And the reason I wanna reiterate it is because I have never heard it addressed by you guys. And that is, well, except for Kevin Carroll, I would say. I think you've addressed it, Kevin, which is that the, um, the option that you voted on and passed to have rent control be either seven percent or seven percent is meaningless. And given that it's meaningless, I'm not sure what, like, and, and, and that you've got this, um, this really, really unethical group of people that are like going after it. It's like, just let us deal with it, you know? You guys are, are, you, you passed, uh, rent control, rent control and seven percent is better than ten percent, I will give you that, but it is seven percent across the board. Five percent plus CPI doesn't go any lower than seven percent. So. Do you have something to say about that, Catherine Way? Oh, you look like you're gonna speak. From the city attorney, when you're finished. Okay, um, yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm still really, really irritated that you would think that that makes sense. And that there would not be more conversation about making it a more meaningful, um, rent control. So I would ask that you please just get rid of it. Just let us start over. Okay, cuz this, it, it doesn't make us happy. I don't think it makes anybody happy. Clearly, it doesn't make the landlords happy. And we're complaining about it. Scott Candel, I think what you said was the best, uh, legislation is the one that everybody hates. I don't think that's working out. Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right. Uh, next public comment, please.
Can I just ask a clarifying question, um, to the city attorney? Since this referendum was, uh, petition was, uh, filed within the thirty-day period of time and qualified by the Department of Elections at the county, the ten sixty-seven is on hold until this process works out. Um, if, uh, so it won't, uh, actually reach a conclusion of that potentially for November of next year. It would still be on hold until November of next, so it's a complete year from now. There would, the only thing that would apply is fourteen ninety, fourteen eighty-two, which is the existing California law, not ours. Okay.
That is correct. So, uh, once, so as I sort of stated at the beginning, ordinances have a thirty-day period before they become effective. Um, and Um, and if a referendum petition qualifies within those thirty, is submitted within those thirty days and then qualifies, the ordinance remains on hold until the completion of the referendum process, which is either repeal or the outcome of the election. And so if the voters then rejected it, it would never go into effect. If they approved it, then it would go into effect after the referendum. So until um, one of those outcomes, um, state law that essentially uh caps rent increases at ten percent uh would, would remain in effect until, until the outcome of this process.
Hey, um, next public comment, please.
It's Richard from Larkspur. Long time no see, no time, long time no speak. Um. I wanted to address uh council member Wade, in a way. Um, because for the last year, you've spoken about how this is so important. It should go to the voters for a vote. And if this is the way it's going to wind up going to the voters with the really deceptive tactics that have been used to gather these signatures. I would simply ask you, is this the way you envisioned it going to the voters? Is this a way you would have liked it uh to go to the voters? Uh, that's not the impression I got because it's, it's supposed to be democratic and it's not supposed to muddy the waters. Because even though there might be months apart between March and November, it's still part of the discourse and it's still in the air. And it's difficult to come up with clear definitions when all of that is going on. So I just wanted to relay my experience with the carter. And I've spoken to friends who've had similar experiences. I get a knock on the door. Are you for rent control? Uh, yeah, you're a registered voter? Yeah, well, I have a petition here which caps your rent at seven percent and blah, 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 a few other talking points. And I went, wait a minute, I've just been going to meetings where they passed a law that we already have this. Why would you be circulating a petition so that we could get what we already have through the city council? And well, he flashed all of these signatures in front of me. And he said, oh, and then he, he went to the last page of the petition. And he said, see, there's Mayor Paulson's signature. He supports this petition. And I knew, I said, wait a minute, no, that's probably his signatures making it an official petition for the city somehow. It's not on your list of, of other signatories to this. And luckily I knew enough and I had been coming to these sessions to go, no, I'm not going to sign this. But I've since spoken to other friends who live in Larkspur. One of whom actually totally fell for it, that he was signing for rent control and did not get that uh, that form where he could say, take my name off it in time. And he was incredibly upset that he was duped this way. Uh, somebody else that lives in my building.
So Richard, we did three minutes. We just want to wrap it up.
Somebody else who lives in my building had a similar uh, uh, experience and didn't uh sign. And somebody else who lives in another smaller complex, who I know in, 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 in Larkspur also was suspicious of, of the approach and didn't sign. So I just, you know, I don't know how many people I'm speaking for who might have had similar, it's hard to tell, experiences. But just from what I've heard and the way I experienced it, I wouldn't be surprised if for, for everybody, it wasn't presented uh as an, as, as a petition to rescind the local.
Ten sixty seven, got it. Thank you, Richard.
So, so Richard, I, I, since you asked a question directly of me, I'd, I'd love to respond. Is that um, I have been in the last several months of this debate, um, realizing that I think of um, it should be a decision that should be made by the voters. Um, and, but I was not able to convince my colleagues at the time. Um, so my, my position did not prevail, which was why we had ten sixty seven voted on by my colleagues. However, to answer your question, I would have preferred to have a city initiated and council initiated um a ballot measure because then we could have controlled, we could have had um more control over the process. Um, and we didn't initiate that for um the vote that came down. But I hear what you're saying that, that there were um matters that were unclear to a lot of people or maybe to you and some of your friends. And um, that's the process in which petition gathering happens. Um, it's not the process in which a city would have initiated petition gathering. So that's, it's a less.
Wasn't unclear.
It's lessons to learn if there's going to be another referendum to come forward that, that.
It wasn't that it wasn't unclear. It was very clear to me because I happen to know. But it was so deceptive that for other people who had.
Okay, guys, um, so uh, Richard, thank you. I, I just, um, let's move on to the next comment. I, I'd like to say, I, I don't think there's, the matter tonight is whether we're gonna take ten sixty seven and rescind it tonight or put it on the ballot. So how it got here, um, you know, I have my own feelings, but I do appreciate your public comment, Richard. Thank you so much. Okay, next public comment, please.
And I please ask a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
City manager. And possibly, I know you're not a criminal attorney, Sky, I don't think. Um, I've heard a number of complaints, over a dozen and new ones here tonight of people who are very still upset. And what I found interesting is people that have been approaching me who are homeowners, uh, particularly in Madron Canyon and the Green Bay Hills. Some of whom are not even in our jurisdiction who signed the petition who realized that they'd been duped and lied to. Is there a time limit on which they can file a complaint through our assistant city manager to the police department?
I'm not sure of the statute of limitations. It would be in the years. But um, but there are penal provisions in the Elections Code uh that prohibit uh, uh uh deceptive um and misinformational tactics by signature gathers. I will say though, that these have not been significantly tested um against First Amendment principles. But uh, the city has received similar complaints to the, uh, the one that was just received. Those have been forwarded to the Police Department for investigation and they will ultimately be forwarded to the District Attorney's Office for the District Attorney to, I'm sorry, the city manager one.
I don't want, people don't misunderstand. If an, so I have actually the numbers of who contacted us. But if an individual said they felt fraud had occurred, then they were informed that fraud is defined in the Elections Code as a crime and that they have the right to file a police report with the Central Marine Police Authority. And then the Chief of Police would determine if the police, if the filed report should go to the District Attorney's Office. One individual did that. No other individuals have actually gone that far. Three individuals, including the one who did it, made that accusation. But only one has actually gone to the Police Department and filed a police report. Uh, most of the comments we've received have been along the lines of the speaker that you just heard in some variation complaint. Uh, but have not asserted that a crime took place. Uh, so I just want to be clear, we have not been forwarding every person who has complaints. We have just indicated when people have told us they think actual fraud occurred. Um, then we have provided them with information on what the process is to make an accusation. The bars, I will say, I'm not to deter anyone, but it's a pretty high bar. Um, the, to, to prove that fraud occurred. With that said, we have received a, a very high number of complaints about the way the petitioners operated in the committee.
In light of the high number of complaints, wouldn't it behoove us to put out on social media, including your weekly newsletter, a statement to that effect, that if people with these complaints who feel that they were defrauded and possibly give them the definition in the Elections Code uh, to contact, however you want to word it, to contact uh Shannon or to go directly to the Central Marine Police to file their complaints.
You're asking me if what the city manager should do is promote that members of the public file police report, which is a pretty significant use of public resources. Because they're complaining, it's a little, it's a tough bar. I can do what you're asking. If the council wants to take a vote to instruct me to make that public, I will do that. I can't, as a professional city manager, take it upon myself to encourage people to file police reports for complaints. I just can't do that because I have a fiduciary responsibility and, and I just can't encourage a lot of people to do that.
We on the front page of the city website provide those instructions. And just putting out on social media or in your newsletter that we have received a number of complaints. And if you want more information, go to this page on the city website.
But to what end? I mean, because the.
Because a number of lot of.
I understand.
Even our city manager is saying a number of people have complained. So this is an issue that people don't know how to do this. I know how to do it because I've made fraud complaints in the past because of my business. It's a usual practice to me, but for the majority of people. I mean, obviously, if there's been a number of complaints and only one got to the Police Department, we have an information problem. And it's our duty to inform our public how to properly proceed if they have a legitimate complaint.
Okay.
Uh, I, again.
Get the dark and say, no, this is the high bar. That's not for us to judge. That is for the District Attorney to judge. And um, and what our job is, is to inform the public of how to get their complaint about something happening in the city of Larkspur to the proper authorities who can deal with it. We can't as a board, he can't as a city manager, she can't as assistant city manager and city clerk. Okay, it's the police and the DA. So all we're doing is informing our citizens of how to protect their rights. And that's our job.
Uh, uh, so I, I will make, I, I will, I will offer the following to the council. The council can decide. If the council would like me to post the process, just post the Election Code, I will do that. I will never professionally encourage anyone to file a police report saying a crime occurred unless they have any reason to substantiate that a crime occurred. That's a big bar. It, it's a difference to, we've been logging every complaint that everyone's filed here at the city. But to send somebody to the Police Department and say, you now need to attest in writing under the law that you had a crime committed against you. You, I, I just want to make sure that we're encouraging people to do the right thing.
So can I uh, see if there's kind of a, uh, what, what I'm hearing uh, is a couple of things that, that first of all, we're trying to educate people uh how to um how, how to know their rights and what to, what to do. We're also trying to keep them from doing something they shouldn't be doing, like attesting to something or, you know, we're testing to a potential crime. We're trying not to waste resources. I mean, if, you know, fifty people come and, you know, file police reports, obviously that's a um, it's a, it's a concern. Um, is there a way that we can have someone from the public um have a uh, sort of a, a, a statement that would be submitted to the police report uh, and have other people sign on to it? So that it can be, hey, my experience is, you know, this person came to me, they lied to me, they told me it was for this, it wasn't for that. I was misled, you know, and, and then have, if other people agree with that, then they can sign it. And that way we have kind of one document that we can give to the police and they can follow up with the individuals. They'll have their phone numbers, is that?
I, I already had a pretty lengthy conversation with the police chief. Each individual person needs to go to the police station and file a report and assert that they personally experienced a crime. That's the law. And then the chief will package up the ones that he feels are valid complaints and he'll submit them to the District Attorney's Office.
I I tend to agree with Kevin that, that I, I think that if, if, i- if the problem is that people don't know how to do it, then I think they, we should tell them how to do it. I mean, we're not encouraging them to do it, but we should at least give them the information.
And all I'm asking, all I'm asking is that you as a council explicitly direct me because you are asking me to elevate one instance. If I did this for every time someone in the community complains about something.
That's fair, that's valid.
I, the website would be just a long page of how to file a police report. We, I happen to know that I've been the city clerk, I can tell you, we're, we're logging about ten complaints a day against all sorts of things. And if every one of those folks was told, go down to the police station, file a police report, I think the chief would quit.
Okay, now that's valid.
If you want me to elevate this particular issue, I can post.
I, I, I don't want this issue to be treated different than other issues. I, I don't think that's our place to say, you know, uh, that this is different than some, somebody else. Somebody else complaining, their complaint is less important. I don't think that's our role. But I think if there is an issue, and again, I, I'm just, you know, what it sounds like is there may be an issue of people not understanding how to file a police report if they want to, without specifically talking about this issue. Could we have a link on our website?
We can easily do because that's available on the police authority's website.
Okay, so, so maybe what we can do is we can have a link that says, if you would like to file a police report, you have a complaint, you'd like to file a police report, click this link and it will give instructions how to file a police report. Does that sound like kind of a happy medium? I mean, I, I want everyone to, to be able to do this if they want to, but you know, like you're saying, I don't, I don't want to favor certain complaints over other complaints. I don't think that's, that's our job. Is that, does that make sense?
I think it makes a lot of sense to have something on our website that says, if you feel you would lie to about an election issue, this is what you do.
Okay.
And this is who you contact.
All right, so, so Kevin, and respectfully, I, I have to disagree there because I think then we're differentiating certain complaints from other complaints. And I think then somebody's can come up to us next week with a dog issue and say, hey, I have a complaint about a dog. I want you to put it on the website.
Now he goes to me that you go to our website where we have a specific part of the web that says code enforcement. And it gives you a form to fill out to electronically send to code enforcement city of Larkspur. I'm saying, let's do the same for an election. Specifically saying, if you have a complaint about an issue that's going to be in this election, this is the link that you get to, to the Police Department to file a complaint and to ask them what their procedures are. And they can tell them, you have to come in in person and talk to them. And that could be even on our website, that you have to contact the Police Department. We don't control this. But since you're complaining to us, we as the government are going to help you figure out how to do what you need. And if you want to complain about dog poop too, go to our website and our form.
All right, so, so I, I, I hear what you're saying. And again, the reason we have democracy in the city council is that we can discuss these things. I, I agree with you in the sense that I think our citizens should know how to file a police report if they want to. If they have a complaint, they should be able to go to our website, say, I would like to file a complaint. Click a button and it links to how to file a complaint. What I disagree is I don't want to. What I disagree is I don't want to specialize that as far as one type of complaint over another type of complaint. Cause I think then it opens us up to other people with other types of complaints saying, hey, I want my type of complaint on that website too. And then, you know, as Dan said, he gets 10 complaints a day. Maybe one of them is about the election, nine or other people saying, hey, I want my thing on the website. And how do we say we're favoring, you know, this type of complaint over that type of complaint. So while, while I hear what you're saying, that's, that's what I feel is probably something that I am comfortable doing and what I would feel comfortable advising staff to do. And you can disagree, we can have a vote.
I said the last time that all it has to state is that if you have a complaint about an upcoming election or an issue on the election, this is what you do.
I guess council member Carol, though, what I want to, maybe I haven't articulated this well. We have logged every complaint. We will continue to log every complaint. The question's whether we want, you want us to continue to read those complaints? And when we recognize that someone is asserting a crime occurred, say something. Or if you want us to tell everyone who logs a complaint to make their own decision if they've risen to the level where it's worthwhile for them to go to file a police report. If you want the latter, we can do that in this particular instance, if that's the council's wishes.
I would like
I know enough about this. For example, the last speaker, that's not going to rise to the level of a crime. It, it, however, anyone feels about what happened in that behavior, that's not, for better or for worse, not criminal.
I'm sorry, but it's not your decision to make. It is the citizen and the police department and the district attorney. And I think that's got to be made very clear that we're not the ones judging this. But this is where you go to the property, the proper authorities to make a decision about this. Same issue applies if you don't like the storm sewer system. And you complained to Julian and he says, no, that's not my jurisdiction. That's Corne Madera. He's referred me to Corne Madera, the people who can handle my problem. He didn't make a judgment one way or the other. He just told me the facts and that's all I'm asking us to do. We're not the ones to judge whether a crime is committed. That's not your job. That's not our job up here. What our job is, is to inform the citizens how to protect their rights on a crime that's being occurred in our community. Now, whether it reaches the level of a crime, again, that's up to the peace chief of police and the DA, preferably the DA decides whether she's going to act. We should be a neutral party in this, providing information to our citizens on how to protect their rights. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, I, I, we're going to take two, I'm going to differ with you on one point. In fact, the police chief works for me and the other two managers, and I am actually the executive authority responsible for enforcing the laws in the city of California, Larksburg, including state laws that apply. So I do have a role and I feel I do have a responsibility to not encourage people to file police reports that aren't going to get acted on. But I will do that. I will do what you have asked.
We don't have consensus on this yet.
Well,
I, I mean, Kevin, this seems too expensive.
Other members decree. My point is, you're not an attorney, are you? You don't have a law degree.
I'm not an attorney.
But I, I think we need
And Scott is not a criminal attorney. You have done criminal practice, I shouldn't assume.
So I think we may have, it, it sounds like we may have consensus with Scott and I would have liked to hear what the mayor has to say that, that we do have policy, we do have procedures in which, uh, through our central marine police authority, someone could file a complaint for what, all the myriad of reasons.
Police report, I really want you to understand the difference. Filing a police report is not a complaint. You go down there and you attest under law
Right.
that everything you're saying is exactly what happened.
For, for a myriad of different things that can happen, not just this one particular thing. And I, and I, I think that's an opportunity to educate people about, you know, it could be the dog barking next door or whatever it is. But I don't think our resources should be spent on this specific issue. I think the resources of the proponents of getting an ordinance together could be better spent in educating the community in support to have, they can support their view of the ordinance. So I, I, I see our police, um, resources that need to be protected and not, not to be protected, need to be allocated in, um, because our resources are very fine, uh, finely drawn in our police authority. We don't have a lot of officers. More, we would like to have more officers than we have. And I think they're, the way that they should be used is really an enforcement of, um, more community impactful, uh, incidents. So I don't support, um, what, uh, council member Carol said to take that additional step to pull this out and highlight it. I think it, it remains within the existing structure.
Okay, so let's, I, I have a couple, uh, thoughts here as well. Um, one is I do want to focus on the agenda item tonight. We're, we're here really to decide what to do with 1067. And, and I will say I was very disappointed, you know, the public comment that came forth and I've been in the community quite a lot, you know, these last few weeks and I really don't appreciate just what I've heard and what I've understood to have happened in the petition gathering. Um, that being said, a question for the city attorney, two questions actually. Um, one is, you know, just the, the end game here. Let's assume that the, the one, um, you know, uh, report that is being filed, you know, prevails or I don't know why. The question is what, what would actually make a difference? You know, what could be the outcome of, you know, say people, let's, let's just be hypothetical, like Vice Mayor likes to be hypothetically, there's fraud. What, what, what happens then?
Okay, well, first, um, to one of, um, city manager's points, I do want to point out that, um, since, since this is the conversation took a particular direction, I do want to unpack just very briefly before answering your question that the, the statute at issue does require an intentional misrepresentation or intentionally making false statements. And although I do not have a criminal practice, I do understand that those provisions do, um, require, um, not just that a false statement was made or that facts were misrepresented, but that the person who made them understood what the actual truth was and intended to, uh, to, to mislead and state the opposite. So just to be clear, it's, it's, it is a, um, it, it, it's going to require proving this, um, to, and I'm get, this is now getting to your question, Mayor. So if the, if the police department investigates and they accumulate sufficient evidence to believe that, that this statute was violated and they refer that to the district attorney and the district attorney works with an investigator to compile additional evidence and they conclude that they can prove beyond a reasonable doubt all elements of this crime, they may proceed with a criminal, um, action against the individuals that they have the evidence um, that, that, uh, that they have sufficient evidence to prove up the case. That would not affect the outcome of the referendum. It would be an individual, um, criminal charge against the individuals who were involved in doing that. That said, um, if there were enough of these cases and there was therefore enough evidence that there was a basis to believe that a sufficient number of, um, people who signed the petition, um, had been misled, um, then it would be possible for somebody to initiate a civil case to try to, um, have the referendum, if it were on the ballot, pulled off of the election. There's a, there's a court mechanism to do that, even after the council has said, let's schedule the election. There's a method to try to get the court to either pull it back off or even after the fact overturn it. If the court actually believes that, that the, 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 um, a sufficient number of people misunderstood, uh, what was being asked of them. But that is also, I, I'm sorry to reuse the hot, this, this statement, but it, it, all of these are relatively high bars, but that, that is what, how this would potentially play out, to where it would have an effect.
Okay, so given the amount of resources and the timing is unlikely by March, you know, that this would happen.
That is the, that, that, now that, that is the other a- aspect of this is that the timing is, is difficult for these.
And, and the irony for me is that all of that would lead to what some people want anyway, which is for us to rescind. So I, I, I'm not sure I understand, you know, what the end game is, but that being said, I, I do agree with council member Carol and just the, the fact that I, I would like the council in a neutral way to educate the public about, about fraud, if that's possible. And, and I, I think the point that there's 10 complaints a day, and if we give special attention to what happened by the petitioners, what does that do to all the other cases concerns me as well. So again, question to city attorney. Is there a way to put this on the website which is not biased or, you know, prejudicial or, you know, in any, I mean, we're, we're really just trying to say, as a city, we believe fraud can occur. And if so, these are the steps you take.
Again, if you want me to bring up front to the website, how to file a police report, we can do that. If you'd like us to post this section of the elections code on the website, so people can read it and make their own conclusion, we can do that. What we can't do, I think, is actually tell people which types of crime to file a police report for.
Yeah.
Probably for another day, I want to have a conversation about staff's role in the filing of police reports because we filter a lot of complaints in this community to tell people how to best achieve their outcome. And it's almost never sending them there, even when they start out with the idea that someone's done criminal harm to them. So, you know, we can talk a different day about.
Do you think those, those two actions, those two postings would, would conflict with what you just said, you know, the filtering process?
I think that in all candor, that if I do this and there's a bunch of police reports filed, I'm going to have to go see the police department and talk to the staff about why I encouraged a bunch of police reports that they can't really act on.
Don't blame it on me.
Well, they'll watch the video, so I guess they'll make their own.
Okay, so it sounds like we, um, again, we're, we're sort of on a tangent here. We're not doing public comment, please sit down. Um, so, uh, yeah, go ahead. Okay, I'm sorry, we are still doing public comment, please stand up.
But where are we with this?
Yeah, but let, let's just finish where we were and then we'll, we'll take your comment. So I think, uh, I'm not sure if we're making a motion here or
I don't, I don't.
Or we're just giving direction to the city attorney, but we want the council to take a, you know, kind of.
I know, we're talking a lot about it. Yeah.
So can we add violating the Brown?
Uh, I, 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 I would have cut this off if I felt that you were violating the Brown Act. I think that this discussion is comprehended. We're in a discussion about, about the, about the subject of the referendum itself. Um, I, I agree that an action to, um, uh, the, the a, a vote on this is, is, was not necessarily described, but the discussion was, was reasonably within the, the, the context of what was, what was agendized. But I think, I think, I'm guessing at this point, the city manager, I, I'll leave it to him and not put, put words in whether he has sufficient direction about, about addressing this guy, item that, that the city council has raised related to the referendum.
So I, 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 I
You said there's the one year. People can file a police report for up to one year after the incident that occurred.
We're delving far too deep into something we don't
There's no 30 or 60 or 90 day time limit.
Uh, let me take a look at this because I'm not sure that the, I'm not sure that this statute actually states what the statute of limitations is.
So, so let me, let me make a, a suggestion that I, I, I do think that this topic is not directly related to whether we put 1067 on the ballot. Could we agree to put this on the agenda for the next meeting?
With a staff report giving us options. Both what is legal.
I would really much rather take the direction I heard Mr. Mayor just act.
All right. So, so let me, let me make a suggestion if I may. I, I, I am a, a believer that everybody should have equal access to, into the, the law and, and if somebody wants to file a police report, you know, they have a right to do it. You know, I think that, you know, whether it's got merit or not, you know, the tons of people file police reports that don't have merit and that's their choice, you know, and I, I agree that we shouldn't filter them. I don't think we should encourage them to file police reports that don't have merit, but I think it's up to people. And I think all, all we, our, our role would be, I think if we have something on the website that says, if you have a complaint, click here. And something else that says, if you're interested in filing a police report, click here and it gives them directions how to file a police report. I don't see anything wrong with that. And I, I would
We have that already.
Well, I, I would make a, a motion to give direction to staff that if we don't have that to
I understand what the council wants. I don't think you should take a vote per the city attorney.
Okay, but the problem is that, but I, I want to make sure you're, you, you're hearing direction from me. I just want to see if we have consensus with that direction. Is that okay?
It is, of course. It's always your prerogative.
I mean, I just don't, I don't want to, uh, so, so
I can accommodate all of
I, I think what you, you just said, the two things that you would do, right? The two actions, you know, the two links on the website. Does the council, are we okay with that?
I, I think if it's a generic one, it to direct, points people in the right direction. I just don't think it's a, I, I, I heard his arguments as to why highlighting a specific allegation on this specific matter would be a very cumbersome and potentially, um, uh, destructive thing.
Okay. And which is what we're not planning to do. That, that's not what you were saying that you would do. And I think all four of us are okay with that. Is that correct? Council member Carol as well. Okay. So I think we, we have direction and we're good. So is that?
I, I feel comfortable.
Okay, we're, we're, we're good there. Okay, so let's move on. Um, so I, I got a little disoriented myself. We were in public comment and so we need to continue public comment. So I apologize if I sat someone down. I, I thought we were on to something else. So please, if you have another pump, comment, come to the mic.
I think the point staff made those, you haven't yet invited people who haven't made an initial public comment.
She's her second.
And she's coming to Mike for a second time. It's your typical practice.
So, so thank you. Um, point well taken. So is there anybody else who'd like to, who hasn't spoken, who'd like to speak first? Okay, seeing none. Um, sometimes there's hesitation, I know. Uh, go ahead.
This is just quick.
Yeah.
I think we've gotten completely derailed with this business of reporting to the police. I'm one of the people that got duped. And I think what's really critical here is all these other people that signed this petition are completely unaware of the fact that they've been misled. This is what I think we need to do is to educate them. If it hadn't been for, uh, an informed neighbor, I wouldn't be here today. I wouldn't even know that this has happened. And most of these people, I'm, I'm sure are not aware. I think that's the job right now is to inform these people about what they signed. That's, that's all that's
Yeah, thank you. Point well taken. Okay, so, so, um, I guess if we, uh, just one more check, if we have any public comment left, otherwise we'll come back and try to decide on this matter. Okay, seeing none. Um, so, uh, council member Carol, thank you for, I, I think the essential point of, you know, informing the voter is good. I think we have direction there and we kind of come back to the point of tonight, which is business item eight point one. So we were
I just want, I just wanted to briefly address two questions
Yes.
from council member Carol. One, um, most likely the statute of limitations for a potential violation of these provisions of the elections code is one year. And, um, in terms of your question about the format for the referendum question, it would be drafted so that a yes vote is a vote to approve the ordinance and a no vote is a vote against to, to, to basically undo the ordinance.
Okay. Thanks for those clarifications. Um, so, so again, uh, uh, you know, coming back to the, the court decision, whether to rescind 1067 or to put it on the ballot, when, if and when. Um, so any thoughts on that? I think we, we were talking a lot about the petition gathering process.
So I'm, my understanding is at this particular business item, it is two options. One is to vote to repeal 1067 completely. Straightforward like that. The second is what, no, to receive a certification of signature verification saying that there's sufficient referendum petition against 1067. And if we repeal 1067, then that referendum goes away because there's no longer a 1067. If we don't repeal it, then we're doing the first reading of saying we put it forward for, um, uh, a referendum um, per these verified signatures.
Slight, slight difference. Uh, if you, if you
Couldn't say these things rhetorically so that everybody knows that we're all on the same page.
You, the, the choices before, the initial choice before you is repeal the ordinance or decide Or decide that you want to submit it to the voters. If you submit it, if you decide you want to submit it to the voters, then you, we need direction about when to schedule it and we will come back to you with a resolution to call that election. The ordinance is in front of you tonight, you do not have to introduce it tonight, but if you decide you want to repeal ten sixty seven, then you could. I would recommend that if you do not introduce it tonight, that you introduce it at the next regular meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, any thoughts? I mean, we have. Pretty clear choice in front of us and.
Yeah, I've got a few comments. When we first started discussing. Rent stabilization for apartment renters in Larkspur two years ago. The one issue. In the initial two meetings. Then both landlords. And renters. And this council agreed upon. Which that we did not have enough data. To make intelligent decisions. Of course, I think some people don't believe we could ever make an intelligent decision, but that's on them, quite frankly. And that's why we put in the ordinance registry. To give us the information. About the rental. The rental registry. That can give us the facts so that we can make fact based decision. That balance the needs of both landlords and tenants. And the best entrance of a Larkspur as a whole and its future. The information will be crucial. In planning not only rent stabilization. And to know what's going on with tenant evictions. But also would be very helpful. In trying to meet our mandate dated our NHA numbers, Rena numbers. And our general plan update that we're doing now and our zoning updates. The ordinance is not perfect. We have a lot of disagreements among ourselves, but it's what we came up with. It is the sausage. That is the product of democracy. I didn't get all that I wanted to. At the far end, Catherine didn't get any of what she wanted, I guess. But that's life. That's democracy in action. That is consensus of what we can agree on. I'd like to point out. All of us. Are deeply committed. To serving the Larkspur community and guiding its future. That's why all four of us are up here. And I respect Catherine's opinion. Not because I have to, but because I know that what she and Gabe and Scott and I want. Is to serve the Larkspur community. And we're doing the best we can. If the issue is not put on the March fifth ballot. How many apartment tenants can wait? Until January twenty twenty five, at least fifteen months from now, after certification and all the legal processes. For relief. More disturbing is how many will be forced to move, not just from Larkspur, but from Marin and the Bay Area. Many will be forced to move after twenty more, twenty or more years of being Larkspur residents. Leaving behind and disconnecting from friends, neighbors, their church groups. All of the associations they have with this community. It was interesting, this morning I received a neighborhood newsletter. I don't have their permission to quote it, so I'm going to summarize it anonymously. And it said, as readers will recall, Central Marin Police reported last summer that we are short on police officers. Forty-two officers are budgeted for the three towns, thirty-two patrol officers. And traffic officers to handle thirty-five to four thousand calls per service. The other officers are administrators, detectives, and those assigned to task forces. So actually, twenty-two officers. Are handling the calls for service twenty-four seven. That averages out to five officers on duty at all time for all three towns. Quote, we're currently down ten openings. And one of the reasons those empty positions are hard to fill is because housing is not affordable. And some of these officers are commuting three and four hours away. To get to work and they work ten to twelve hour shifts, not including overtime. And that's the person who has a nine millimeter gun on his hip and a rifle in his trunk. Do you want him making those decisions after a fifteen hour day, possibly eighteen hour day, including their commute? I don't. If police officers starting at eighty to hundred thousand dollars, accounting overtime, can't afford Larkspur. And our chief, fire chief, reports the fewest number of applicants he's ever seen in his career. Who will replace them? Who's going to replace the grocery, retail, medical and restaurant workers who have lived here for years? When they are forced out by excessive increases in their rents. It's going to be people who live outside the county. Rich people will move into those apartments, but the service people we need will be moving here, will be coming here from Vallejo, Fairfield. And farther out into the Central Valley, because that's the only place they can afford to live. Are you prepared for the increased traffic on the Richmond Bridge? Magnolia, Dougherty and Sir Francis Drake for all those outside replacement workers? How much more will our businesses have to pay in signing those and hourly wages? To get employees to commute from the East Bay to Larkspur? How high will they have to raise their prices to cover their costs? That we, as residents, will have to pay? And will those businesses be able to stay open? Just walk down Magnolia and look how many of them have signs in their windows looking for help? How long can that continue? I started working on rent stabilization five years ago because of the crisis facing seniors. In my mobile arc, mobile home park community. Who are living on social security, trying to keep up with nine plus percent rent increases when their checks only went up two to three percent. Which I think they just now it'll be three percent next year. I received this letter yesterday and was asked to forward it in honestly, so I will read it for them. Dear councilperson, and this is addressed to all of us. Many of us purchased our trailers, thinks they would be affordable on our social security payments. This is becoming almost impossible due to our yearly rent increases of at least seventy-five dollars a month a year. My rent has gone from six hundred to over a thousand in six years. And now utilities are taking my old check. Older trailers are harder to sell, so our investments and our future are becoming worthless. They're hard to mortgage and impossible to move. It's necessary to keep kept anonymous. One of the saddest part of that letter is that it has to be anonymous. They're so scared of the master landlord of our complex. When Skyler tenants were confronted with the same dramatic increases that we faced at the mobile home park. We have since, in the last couple of years, read and heard in person dramatic stories of their plight. I've even driven them to the airport. Many more have stopped to talk to me on the government air marsh trail, the farmer's market on Saturdays. Molly Stone, CVS, Trader Joe's. And just this last Sunday's Lark Theater. I was ambushed during the previews and I'm one of those people who loves previews. And they're all giving me the similar stories of hardship, but not complaining for fear of retaliation. By their landlords. I, you know, throw my back on them for political expediency. I think the only. Thing I am in favor of is putting this on the ballot in March. I find it interesting. That it took me all of about five seconds. To Google, I'm in first LLC and find out it was the Monair Apartment Management. Apparently, the IJ couldn't do the same. I just find that absolutely fascinating. I don't know if any of you have been reading Marin's scope, but for the last three, three editions, they've had his pieces. On the democratic socialist because they're the ones who happen to be pushing rent stabilization in at least three communities. They don't hide their name. They say who they are. They're not trying to pull stuff behind people's backs and I respect that. I may not agree with them on any other issue. But on this you, this issue, they are on the right side. As this. They earlier said. Staff hours have been horrendous on this. Just the, I'm glad I'm not, well, I guess I am paying for this rocks. Bill that we probably had with all the staff reports. I think it'd be disrespectful of the staff, the city attorney and our time. That we have spent, I've read all of those thousand pages and probably another thousand. Reading all the different websites, both the state, federal and nonprofit websites about rent stabilization. To not put this on the on the ballot. And as soon as possible would be a disservice to the community, which is the most important thing. To let them have their say and hopefully the truth will get out. I don't think. Based on, I have teenage grandchildren. And one of the biggest thing that worries me is their lack of attention span. It keeps going smaller and smaller. There've been. Uh, articles about it. One school in Florida was in the New York Times this week because they absolutely banned cell phones. During the school day. And there's a huge uproar from both students and parents about it. But after one year, surprise, surprise, grades have gone up. Engagement with their teachers, completion of homework have all risen dramatically. Because their attention spans have increased, but the bottom line is. I don't think putting this on the March ballot will have a damn thing to do with the November ballot. That will be an entirely separate ballot. And I think we could see what kind of shenanigans happened during that March ballot. See by the voter count afterwards, the report put out by the Elections Department. See what areas were strong, and this is assuming it does in the past. Which traditionally they don't the first time around. We could. The tenants organizations could see where they need to strengthen their arguments if they do want to push to petition on the November ballot. So, long story short. I vote yes. To put it on the March fifth ballot and I would be delighted to make that motion when it's appropriate. Thank you.
Can I get you a glass of water? So ca- can I just ask Kevin to clarify, you you are putting forward that we adopt um, the signature certificate of signatures for this? That we repeal ten sixty seven. I just want to make sure, because we have to repeal it before we put it on a ballot. No?
What when we, uh. City attorney, clarify.
Yep, um, I I I think, well, actually, my understanding is that of the of the two options that were at the top of our report, directing staff to return to at a future meeting with a resolution.
With a resolution.
Uh, six, ten sixty seven to the voters of the city of Larkspur. I think that's what you were asking for and that's one of the two options tonight versus.
Yeah, that's what I was getting to.
And you're specifying the date is March, March fifth, yeah. Um, so great, thank you, Councilmember, uh, Carol, and I'd love to hear from the other two, just same, you know, closing thoughts before we entertain a motion.
So that's what I was getting to, but that, um, Kevin, just the um, the arguments that were presented tonight that we should um. Repeal and start all over and let a citizen driven petition come in the November term. Your, um, that was not compelling to you.
It's not compelling because I'm worried about the number of tenants. That would be forced to move out between now and next January.
By certification, yeah.
And I already know in the last three months, five of my neighbors have moved. Because they don't see any openness. And at least another five, hearing about the first five, have come to me and said they can't take another rent increase in June of next year. And they need to know what to do now, should they start looking for someplace else to live and try to find a buyer for their home. That's at least ten voters who would have been in favor of this ordinance. That. Won't be here if it's not on the March ballot.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you want to say? Okay, uh, Scott.
Uh, thank you. So I I agree that we have been working on this for a long time. I think it is not perfect. I think that it is a compromise. Um, Dorothy, to address your comment, uh, it is not that everybody hates it, it's that nobody loves it. I think that certain people would love sixty percent of CPI. You know, I don't agree with that, you know, certain people would love no rent control. I don't agree with that. You know, so this is a compromise that I think we all could live with and. You know, I I I think we passed it and and I'm, uh, I agree that, uh, we should put it on the ballot at the first earliest. Uh, possibility, which I believe is March. Um, and please tell me if I am out of line legally, but I think as our intent is the seven percent cap. And while certain landlords may take advantage of the fact that it has been rescinded at this point. Uh, and are not bound by that seven percent. That that might be information that we could use in the future. If we feel that, uh, we need to adjust that seven percent to hit our target, that is fair for the Larkspur community.
So apologies to, um, I guess it's not, it's not technically pedantic, but it is just a psych, it 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 will not be rescinded. It's it's simply in abeyance, on hold.
Okay.
Um, I. I'm not sure this is going to directly address your question, so I may need to have you restate it, but I do want to remind everyone that the, uh, that the ordinance did contain a rollback provision back to, I believe, May. Um, if, uh, this goes to a vote in March and the voters decide to leave it in place, um, even though it's in effect, even though the ordinance is on hold, that rollback date will actually become effective. And so any landlord that is thinking about implementing an increase between now and then should consider that under the ordinance's own terms, they would effectively have to credit or refund any increase. In excess of seven percent that wasn't subject to the, that was not approved through the rent cap, um, appeal process. They 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 would be at risk for any increased rent that they had collected back to May.
So that would automatically happen for any, and I just want to make sure anybody watching this understands, and tell me if I'm getting this right. That any landlord who raises the the rent over seven percent, going back to the initial date. If this passes, they would have to refund. So is they would have to refund that money to the tenant, everything. So is, they would have to refund that money to the tenant, everything that was charged over ten percent, over seven percent during that period.
They could also submit an application to, to justify the increase for that period of time, but, but I just think that it's, it's important public information for everyone to understand that if, that, that, that the rollback provision is in place, it is part of the ordinance. If the ordinance ultimately goes into effect, that will also be effective. And so if, in the, if rent increases that exceed seven percent between the rollback date and the effective date of the ordinance would be at risk, requiring either an application to exceed the rent cap or be subject to an action by the tenant to recover the excess rent that had been collected.
And I, I don't want to go too far sideways on this, but what is the burden of the tenant at that point? And who do they go to? And what is the process? If, if a landlord raised their rent to ten percent tomorrow or nine percent, whatever they're allowed to do now, and this passes in March, and the tenant says, hey, you overcharged me six hundred dollars over the last, you know, three months, what do they have to do to get credit for that?
They would, I believe, under the terms of the ordinance, they'd have to initiate their own action to recover the rent. Um, the city doesn't, doesn't take an enforcement action in, in those cases, but, um, but I believe, um, yeah, so they would have to, but they'd have to, they would have to undertake their own action, legal action against the landlord to, to recover that.
The only thing I'd add is, as part of the implementation process, we did reach out to some organizations that provide support to both sides of the equation to perhaps resolve such issues without the need to get lawyers in the court involved. So ideally, once we know if the ordinance is in place, we would then put this resource in place and possibly that would be uh, less confrontative, well, I won't say less, a less expensive way of resolving any dispute about previously charged rent.
Okay. Thank you. So that's, I'm sorry. So long-winded answer to my position is I agree with Kevin. I think we should put on the ballot and put on the ballot in March.
Okay. Um, so I'll, I'll be really brief. I, I really appreciate all the comments. And yeah, I, I think, and I want to thank everybody here tonight and everybody who's watching on Zoom. And, uh, you know, I'd like us to get back to Zoom comment as soon as possible, but um, in short, I, I, uh, I feel that the ordinance ten sixty seven right now does protect renters. And, you know, just sort of back of the envelope, if you're paying three thousand a month, by the time the November election occurs, you could be paying thirty-six hundred a month, you know, two ten percent increases. And the difference here is substantial. It would be, you know, a few hundred dollars less if, if you're going to the seven percent. And that, that's with the rollback of May of twenty twenty-three. So there's that. And, and to, uh, Councilmember Carol's original point, I think the, 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 the rental registry and the measurement is really important. I mean, I'm, I'm feeling in housing and many policy issues, if you can't measure the problem, you really probably can't fix it. And without better data, I think we're going to go in emotional circles and never really be able to argue against anecdotes or the most vocal public comment, be it from the landlord or from the renter. So we're trying to set up good policy. We're trying to move in a way where, where the community can stand behind it. And I also feel that if the, you know, the referendum was done on question, you know, with questionable information, I think that's what democracy is about. If people are fully informed and we have it clearly stated, you know, ten sixty seven, this is what it is, yes or no, we won't have that process repeated. That's why I didn't want to necessarily, necessarily relitigate what's happened in the past month. So, you know, we would have what many of us have wanted, which is the voice of the community, not just the four of us now. Um, so with that, I'm also for it and I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'm sorry, the city attorney.
However, the city attorney wants to word it.
I, I, I was actually just going to say, I think that we have, all, all we're look, all we were looking for was direct. It was direct. If you, if you were, if you were opting to put it to the voters, we were just looking for direction on the, uh, that that was what you wanted. And the date will come back at the, at your next regular meeting with a resolution to call that, um, call that election, place the, the, the measure on the ballot and, um, you'll have, you'll have a, a draft question for you to review.
Okay. Okay. So then it sounds like from our item eight point one, the direct, we're directing staff to return at the next meeting potentially with a resolution to submit the referendum on ordinance ten sixty seven to the voters of the city of Larkspur.
If you would like to convert that into a motion and take a vote, I didn't mean to say you didn't have to. I just wanted to be clear that we're just looking, we, we just needed that direction. But if you would like to take, make a motion and take a vote, that is okay too.
I would like to make the motion and take a vote.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Sure. I'll second that motion.
Okay, Sasha, we'll call please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay. So with that, um, again, I thank everyone here for your participation, for your patience, and that takes us to adjournment. So, uh, that ends our meeting tonight and we will be back here in two weeks on November fifteenth. Thank you and good night.